Today it'll be posted on the, on the website. You'll hear more about how that's going to work later. So I'm going to introduce myself. My name is Lori Hanson and I'm the Chief of Research Evaluation and Strategic Planning here at the Children's Trust. And we're excited to share with you today some of our thinking about our parenting and our family strengthening initiatives. And to give you some food for thought and hopefully to pick your brains and get input from you about some of the things we've been thinking about. But I'll start out, if you can go to the first slide. Just welcoming you on behalf of our 33 member voluntary Board of Directors. chaired by Kenneth Hoffman and our President and CEO Jim Hodge, who wasn't able to be here this morning. Most of you hopefully know us well, you know that we've been, we're in our 20th anniversary year this year. And you know, we, we strive to partner with the community to plan, advocate foreign funds, strategic investments that improve the lives of all children and families in Miami-Dade County. And today, one of the things we're going to be talking about is the parents and the caregivers and the families that are around, that surround children. To support them and how critical they are to improving those children's lives. So we envision a community that's working together to provide essential foundations that help children achieve their full potential. And you know, as I mentioned, the family is a critical piece to that. We're going to be starting a new five-year cycle. You'll hear a little bit more details about the timelines. And we'll, and how you can give us your input. I'm going to hand it off now to Gretel Suarez, our Director of Research and Evaluation, to kick us off with today's agenda.
Welcome, everyone. We are so excited that you're here to join us and get your input. We have a very large group of those today. As you can see, our registration numbers have grown exponentially. So we've had to adapt our approach to make this as best as experience for you as possible. Which means it's going to be a little bit less interactive than we'd hope, but this is not the last time we're going to be getting your input or sharing information. So today, as a result, we've muted microphones, but we'll be gathering your input using a live form and a Mentimeter. So have your devices ready. The live form is going to be used for inputs and questions. And it's going to be accessible through a QR code. And that we're going to be, that we have on the PowerPoint slides as well as a link that we're going to be putting on the chat. Also, we're going to have Mentimeter polls that are going to be accessible through menti.com. Using the codes that we have on the PowerPoint slides as well. So feel free though to use the Zoom reactions buttons to, to tell us your thoughts and whether we're on track and you know, how you're feeling about the direction that we're moving in. As Lori mentioned, this session is recorded and we are going to be posting this on our website. Along with the PowerPoint presentation, the list of the registered participants, in case you want to reach out and collaborate and network with each other. And also the Q and A. So as you're putting your questions on the form, we're going to be looking and pausing throughout and we're going to try to answer some of the questions, but not to worry. Within the next week, we're going to be posting these on our website in the grants page. So you can refer back and you'll have all of the materials there. Let's see, you will have. You're hearing today from three trust staff about the different aspects of our strategic planning and the potential direction for this new five-year funding cycle. And, and, and just one other thing about the form that we're going to, we're going to have it open until 5:00 PM today. So if you go back to your colleagues and you want to, you get additional questions or input or thoughts that you want to share with us, you still will have time after this session to, to include it in the form. One other thing is to be, we're going to be muting your microphones. So please try to stay on mute so that we can, the recording can be as clear as possible for you all to be able to refer to later. And you know, just try to be present, engage, post your questions, give us your input and be open to new ideas. We're trying to share new ideas and hoping to get new ideas from you all. So looking for your very constructive feedback. In terms of the agendas, you can see we're going to be covering quite a bit and a lot of, but we'll be pausing throughout to get, to get your input. Next. Next slide. So our goals for today, as I just, as I mentioned, is to learn, for you all to learn, to share and to connect. Can you go back one slide please? Back to the agenda slide. And. To the session goals, sorry. Next slide. So our, the session goals. Okay, thank you. So today our goals are for you to learn, to share and to connect. First, we want you to learn more about the trust investments in parenting and family strengthening, including some aspirations and. Updates for our new cycle. As you know that our new cycle starts October 2023. So as we review different sections, we're going to pause for your questions on the live form. And yeah, we want you to share your thoughts about what we've planned. Anything that, we want you to really share with us, anything that you think we've overlooked, anything that needs special attention. What you think should be emphasized more and whether there's any concerns or unintended consequences that we need to, to be considering. Today's session is really an important touch point for input. Can you please move to the next slide? So today's, today we're gathering your input, your key stakeholder. And it's, today is an important touch point for input from you all, from our community stakeholders and service providers with experience. To give us input about what's working, what's not working, as well as any feedback about the information that we're sharing. Around the direction for this new parenting and family strengthening funding cycle. We are very excited about your interest in this work. And we have worked really closely with Q and Q research associates on some focus groups. That have worked, have been conducted over the last few months in English, Spanish and Creole. With parents that really include over 100 fathers, mothers, alternative caregivers, teen parents, expecting parents, biological. And alternative caregivers involved in the dependency system, parents of youth involved in the juvenile justice system. Parents of children with disabilities, parents of LGBTQ youth. So we've gathered input from a lot of community, of a large part of the community because we really value this input. Also Q and Q fielded an online parent community survey from July to October. Where we had over 3,700 responses. And so many thanks to all of you out there who assisted us with those focus groups recruitment and hosting efforts. As well as disseminating the survey. This was a team approach and we are very thankful to all of you for that. The analysis for these results are underway. We're going to have key findings from this input and this is something that we're going to be incorporating into the RFP requirements and into the narrative and we'll be sharing it throughout the community. Next slide. So as we noted earlier, there, we have the live form where we're going to capture your input and questions per section. You can submit multiple responses per section on the live form. So you just keep going back. To that QR code and selecting the right section where you're wanting to give us. Input or where you have a question and just continue to resubmit. And also we'll be having the Mentimeter polls. Throughout where we're going to be gathering more specific feedback and the Mentimeter is something that you can use on your, on the computer or also it's very phone and phone friendly. So if you have your phone handy, that's where you can access that as well. And then separately, at the end of the session, yeah, we'll be sharing some next steps. So right now we'd like to see who's with us today. So please take out your phone or your computer. And go into Mentimeter, menti.com and use this code or use your phone to access the code. And let us know who you are. Are you a currently trust-funded parenting or family strengthening provider? Are you not currently funded? Are you another community, community stakeholder? Let us know. I'm waiting for the results as they're coming in. We see you all are putting in your responses. See, give it another minute. Good morning, Overtown Youth Center. See a lot of our providers here today. Yep, Yvette, do you want to share with us what the results are? I know you're closely monitoring as it's coming in.
Currently, we have 26% of participants are trust-funded providers in the group parenting program. 9% are trust-funded providers home visitation program. 18% are trust-funded providers family strengthening programs. 13% is trust-funded providers that are other individual parenting programs. 20% are not currently trust-funded providers and 14% of participants are other community stakeholders.
Oh wow. So we have representation from all. Groups. We have a lot of our, majority seem to be our trust-funded providers, but yeah, we also have a lot of new welcome to, to the new. Stakeholders, new parenting experts that have shown to be interested in, in our work. This is great. Well, I hope you enjoy this session and looking forward to getting to know you all better. Next. So this is our live form. As I mentioned, this is, you again could use your phone to scan the QR code. And this is the form that we mentioned where you can add your questions. For each section that we'll be covering and also give us your, your input throughout the presentation. Next. So now I'm going to be giving you a brief overview about our parenting investment. As you know, effective, consistent and supportive parenting prepares children for a lifetime as success. Specifically improved parenting strengthens positive child outcomes related to emotional, behavioral, social and cognitive competence. As well as physical health and safety. Think you all know that. All parents have questions and concerns about their children, but not everyone has trusted sources for answers and supports. I think we use the cliche, children don't come with instructions and we as parents don't always know where to go to for help. So as some families experience greater stressors than others, they need help. And sometimes this results in children unfortunately entering the dependency system due to abandonment, abuse or neglect by parents. Or primary caregivers. So this is really our main reason for investing in this. In parenting and family strengthening. Next. So what is parenting and family strengthening? We have been funding a continuum of care so that children are supported by nurturing and involve families. And this consists of evidence-based and promising parenting programs ranging from our universal investments that's focused on a one-time parent education workshop. That allows anyone without any criteria or risk factors. To receive parenting education and support. And this is. Procured through our parent club and this is, the reason it's great out is because this is not an area that we're going to be soliciting separately. This will be coming out shortly sometime in the spring. It's not part of this investment funding that we'll be putting out in February. So programs are tailored. To serve a selective population. That's our, our second phase of the continuum. Where families that have greater need for support can get multi-session group, individual parenting education or home visitation support. And at the far end, we have our indicated prevention programs that are. More focused on intensive clinical or more long-term home visiting and family behavioral health services. And this is for families that are experiencing parenting challenges and really require a greater level of care, therapeutic intervention and. Longer-term care. So these investments help primary caregivers gain the necessary skills to navigate the trials and joys of parenting. And this we cover from prenatal period to transitioning to adulthood. With the goal of increasing positive parent-child interactions, family interactions and communication. As well as improving child's behavior and decreasing parenting stress. These are like the primary outcomes that we focus on. And historically, we've funded this, the selective and indicated continuum for 17.2 million dollar investment. Supporting 44 programs. In the new cycle, we've increased that to 18.7 million dollars. Next. So our aspirations for this new cycle is to really see this, we see this as an opportunity to gain greater efficiency and program continuity. One of the things that we're going to be doing is combining our parenting and family strengthening. Investments into one initiative. This had been previously procured separately, but we're now combining this. And this means that you will only have to submit one application per agency and. And we are, the other efficiency that we're looking to gain is that we will no longer have a requirement of only one. EBP but per application. This new, for this new solicitation, we are allowing. More than one EVP to be submitted. In fact, we are only allowing an agency to submit one application. So each application will include all of the EVPs that you've currently been. Using and. The other area that we're looking to, to, that we're aspiring to enhance with this new five-year funding cycle is to include further support. For needs that we're seeing with, throughout the community and also some gaps that we have in our funding to support families that have mental health needs. With prenatal support and to engage fathers in, in parenting services. Next. Can you go back? Yeah, thank you. So as I mentioned, that what today is, is our kickoff provider information and input session. As I mentioned, will be releasing February 14th. And the app with a deadline of March 28th for the application. These. Recommendations will be taken to the board in June. And for a new cycle, that's to begin October 2023. Next. Um, to be a direct trust contracted agency, the eligibility criteria. There are some eligibility criteria, however, agencies may also receive trust funding by working with partners within elite agencies application. So this is where you may want to partner, look for potential partners that you've been working with to apply. Subcontractor and professional server partners do not have to meet the fiscal audit requirements, but may, but still may not be Miami-Dade County Public Schools or charter school. That's one restriction that we have. The, we have a fiscal audit requirement and these audits will be reviewed and vetted by our finance department before you're given access to the application. So please be sure that you're getting your audits completed if you're, if you're interested in applying. And now I'm going to pass it over to Bavon, our Director of Programs for more specific details on the various programmatic components for this funding opportunity.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Bavon Ritchie, Director of Programs here at the Trust. And I got the task of giving you sort of the details of the, the areas, who, the what, when and, and how. So thank you again for joining us. And first on the, on the list is to talk about populations to be served, right? So you're going to hear me use the word families a lot. It's because though we collect individual adult participant numbers, we, we fund programs to deliver services to an awarded number of families. Many of the evidence-based programs that I will share with you more about in a little bit. Will have activities for both caregiver and the child. But there are some curriculums that only serve the caregiver with no direct services to a child. But the knowledge, the skills or behavioral changes are expected to have an impact on and identified child of that family. All trust-funded parenting programs will welcome and fully include any primary caregiver, including fathers, mothers. Other relatives and non-relative caregivers. Likewise, programs must support families of children and youth with disabilities. There's no exception here. The trust is really big on, on being an inclusive place where children with disabilities and their families are served. Some programs may provide specialized supports to families. Of children with special needs, including dependency or delinquency involved families. Parents and caregivers of LGBTQ youth are another population in need of particular parenting support. Next. Okay, so Gretel shared with you a little bit about the, sort of the area of, of service in selective and indicated. So by, by currently investing nearly more than $17 million. With more than a half a dozen evidence-based programming in the selective and indicated parenting programs area. The Children's Trust enables Miami-Dade diverse families to choose programs that suit their needs and preferences from a range of options. All EVP curriculums to be funded are expected to support either at-risk and challenged families who are experiencing early signs. Of behavioral problems or may likely experience social behavioral or health problems based on social, educational, economic or environmental factors. And because we are combining our parenting and family strengthening programs, the RFP also includes families who are experiencing challenges with child youth behavior. Parent-child relationships or consequences of youth violence and parents with mental health and substance abuse issues. So here are some examples of populations that we include teen parents. Fathers, again, parents of children and youth with disabilities, low-income families living in high-need neighborhoods. Parents of LGBTQ youth, parents of children with disruptive behavior problems. Families in or diverted from the dependency and delinquency systems, families with mental health or substance abuse issues and homeless families, just to name a few. Next slide. So Gretel mentioned before that, back one. Back one. Yes. So Gretel mentioned before that we are, we're looking to sort of feel, one of the things that we do. Is we always look back and we see, we, we take the time to really, as a part of our strategic planning to, and this is a part of it, to get input. And we look at what we're doing, we, we engage with the board. So we, we have these aspirations for the next funding cycle and the, the board have identified several of these, including supports to families that in need of mental health. Making sure that though we have programs that serve families beginning at pregnancy, it's sort of not necessarily a, a requirement of the program. That we want to have programs that support families beginning at the prenatal period. We want to engage more fathers. We do have currently in our sort of options of in the nurturing field program. That supports fathers, but we want to expand that. So we are looking at other curriculums and, and. To engage fathers and others may be identified through our planning such as support to immigrant families, system-involved families. Parents of, of the LGBTQ youth and more that we hope to get from your input today. So what we're going to do is we're going to, next slide, sorry. And we'll get your input. I'm, I'm going to get to a slide shortly that we're going to start getting some input, right? So, so as it relates to children with disabilities. We always, as I shared before, this population and support to families with children with disabilities is important. To our parenting programs as well as of all the other trust-funded program. The expected percentage for services and we always have put. A, we, we have a threshold of, in each contract. To sort of make sure that this expectation is there. So the expected percentage for services to families with children with disability, it's very, it varies. On the age range of the children in the family. Programs that serve families prenatally will not have a set expectation because. We're, we're, we're providing service to a, a, a family that has a, a pregnant mom in there. So there isn't an, an expectation, right? So programs serving families with children in the early childhood years, birth to five will be expected to serve no less than 5% of their families. To have a child with a disability. This lower expectation recognizes that special needs may not have yet emerged during this time, right? So we're, we're going to set something that we think is reasonable. Whereas programs serving school-aged children must serve a, a minimum of 10% of the families with children with disabilities. Next slide. Okay, so outreach and marketing expectations. We at the Children's Trust, we always support our initiatives and we do broad county-wide awareness campaigns to promote parenting and family strengthening programs. But in order to support you in meeting your contractual requirements, but as a provider. part of what you're going to do is to make sure that you have strong partnerships and that you have additional recruitment for engagement and making sure that you're also meeting the needs of families by providing these outreach and marketing expectations to get individuals in your program and also to refer them out. Next slide. Okay, so now it's time for us to get your input. So we're going to start using the forms section. So what questions or input or concerns you have about this section? We're talking population of service. So please take out your phone or and access the form and I'll wait a minute or half a minute to see what comes up, to see if there's anything specific to the topic that I just shared. And again, not in the chat, please use the QR code where the best way for us to capture all the, the questions and for us to have a systematic way to provide the response is to use the forms function.
Excuse me, Bhavan?
Yes.
I don't know if you can, you can hear me. This is Holly's Whirling Fatherhood Task Force. I don't have the form that you're referring to because I'm having difficulty with my internet. Are we able to ask questions?
Holly, this is Lori. I'm going to be going through some of the things that have come up right now. There's, there's a couple of different ways that you can submit the informations. You could use your phone and scan the QR code that is on the, on the screen now or use the link if you're on the, on your phone and Zoom. I think you're on a phone number right now. You can click the link in the chat, but we have, we have too many people, two, more than 200 people on to do verbal questions. So if, if you, if you aren't able to get on the form, maybe you can put your in, in the chat, but we really are trying to keep everything in one place. Yeah, so I'm going to go ahead and just real quick while you're putting in any questions about the population section that Bhavan went over. There were a few questions about Gretel's sections early on. Someone asked if the RFP would be available for review prior to its release. And no, that's not how it works. Once we release it, we're in the code of silence. And you know, we can't have this type of interaction and input session. There's going to be lots of information. I noticed some people were, you guys are trigger, trigger happy. You're ready to ask a lot of questions, which is great. I love your energy. But maybe wait until the end of each section, jot your, if you have a question, jot it down. But it might be answered. I think I even saw a comment in the chat box right as Bhavan was saying the thing about parents who might be, have mental health or substance abuse issues. So you know, let us give you the information we have and then make sure your questions are the best they can be to clarify if we haven't been clear on something. So we're going to give you a lot of information today that's going to help you start to get ready for the, for the solicitation. So this is going to be a resource-rich morning. There was another question about existing provider. Gretel mentioned that the audit needs to be submitted along with your pre-app. Before you get access to the application, we're going to validate whether what you're uploading is an actual audit. And if you are an existing provider, there's going to, there are options in the system that will validate. If you already have a current audit on file with the Children's Trust, you don't have to upload it again. If we have it already, the system will know that you have that uploaded with us. There was another question about the requirement now that we're, we're, which we often do in many solicitations. We allow one application per agency. That's a, that's often a standard practice. Actually, in parenting, it's been a little, a bit of an exception because we did make different applications per EVP in the past. We're not going to be doing that anymore, but we will continue the same practice that we've always had with, with large organizations that might be municipalities or universities, other big organizations where separate departments really function kind of independently of one another. Those are in our system as separate agencies already, if it's a different school or a different department in a city or a county. However, if there are multiple EVPs being proposed within the same department or unit, those are considered one agency and those will need to be submitted in one application and have one contract. And we are taking the space limitations into, into account for that. So you would essentially fill out all the questions for each EVP that you're going to propose. So not to worry, you will be able to tell us all the great things that you want to tell us. Gretel, I don't know if there's anything else that's come up just now since I've been talking or if we want to go ahead back to Bhavan and give us a chance to see what else has come in. And just by the way, we're going to be answering the really straightforward questions today live like this. But really, if it's a complicated question or one that we're not too sure about, we're going to take the, reserve the time to, to take their time after the session today and answer those questions in writing. And when, when the meeting information is posted, you'll see the answers then. So we may not answer every question. Do try to get your question into the input form so that it is recorded for us to, to follow up on. Okay, go ahead, Bhavan. You can go back.
All right, next slide. Okay, so we're moving on to talking about screening tools, right? We have a requirement for the use of specific screening tools. So next slide. Right, so specific to early childhood and prenatal populations are the additional screenings that are required, right? So all individual programs serving children, birth to fire, are required to administer the ASQ or the Ages and Stages questionnaire, and there are two versions of that. The social, emotional, or, and the general developmental one, right? So if concerns arise from the administration of these screenings, follow-up referrals are expected to connect families to further assessments and as needed. The ASQ III and the ASQ SE in the past, because we currently implement this, they have identified a lot of children, right? Resulting in a higher rate of referral and initiation of additional services. And due to the effectiveness, we are continuing to make this a requirement of the, of the RFP. So ASQ requirement for the, the early childhood population will remain. The other place where we, we had a requirement for additional measure was the, the P was working with prenatal moms and families. And the PHQ 9 is, is a new tool. So we have elected to use the PHQ 9, which is the Patient Health Questionnaire for screenings related to prenatal depression. We have previously required the use of the Edinburgh Postnatal Depression Scale, but we feel that this tool uses more strength-based language and the approach is, is more appropriate for what we're trying to capture. And it can generalize more broadly if a caregiver were to be followed across a longer period of time. Thus, we're switching, right? So next slide. Next slide, please. Okay, so, so I told you about our continued use of the screening tool. So now it's time for us to get your thoughts if you're, if you've used these developmental screening tools, right? So we want to know how easy or difficult is it to conduct the developmental screening with children? How easy or difficult it is to connect children to follow up? Our data shows that those who are currently using are connecting, but we want to know because there are other programs, many of you, as you mentioned, are not funded programs and you might be using something similar because there are some requirements out there for other programs. So we want to know about how easy or difficult is it to connect children or follow-up developmental assessment or intervention because these are screening tools? How easy and difficult is it to conduct the postpartum depression screening? And how easy or difficult is it to connect caregivers with follow-up mental health assessment and intervention? And there are some if questions, if you rated it difficult. So you, you do have the ability to skip. So please go ahead and go to the mentee meter and provide a response. And I'll look to my colleagues to chime in as we get the, the, the input in. Okay, we'll give it a couple of seconds and see to allow you to provide some input. Because there are a few questions on here. So want to give you time. Okay, next slide, please. So the next area that I'm going to share some information about is evidence-based practice. So EVPs are, you'll, you'll hear me say EVP in some cases, and I'll use the longer word, but evidence-based, EVPs are evidence-based program models which are thoroughly reviewed and showing high evidence of success. And curricula are the specific courses manualized and available for these programs, right? So it's EVPs and then the curriculums are the, sort of the next level down. EVP is the larger and the curriculum, because many of our evidence-based models have multiple curriculums. One major update that we're doing in this RFP, as mentioned before, is you may select more than one EVP to implement. And we're going to show you a list of our EVPs that we're using and get your input if you are a user of that EVP. So next slide. Next slide, please. So, so here's a list of our current EVPs and afford me a minute to, to give you a overview of the slide that's here. And then we'll ask for your, for you to use the mentee meter to answer some questions, right? So I'm, I'm sharing a list of our current EVPs that were, were contracted to deliver with our providers and they're organized by group education, individual, inclusive of our home visitation and our clinical intervention services known as family strengthening. We are considering these and others in the upcoming RFP. And we're finalizing a new process that includes literature review as well as needed conversation with programs implementing the EVP to assure that, you know, they're up to date and they still remain impactful. We're, we will be expanding offerings to other EVPs and in a, in a moment, I'll just ask you to tell me a little bit about any of those that you are aware of that you would, that you want to share with us your knowledge about. Our final list will support meeting our parenting needs in, in our community. And, and they are, you can see some of our, our examples in the group we have nurturing. And as I mentioned before, this is where we, we, we have one existing program and there are a variety of curriculums dealing with multiple populations, including, inclusive of fatherhood. We have the Incredible Years and Family and School and Triple P, to name some of those that are listed there. And you'll see in the individual column that nurturing parenting is there. And nurturing parenting has a multitude of curriculums that, so they fall across multiple categories. So they have some that are group-based and some that are individual. We have healthy families, healthy steps, hippie, and those, some of our, and, and we have one of our, what I think Gretel mentioned is parent-to-parent peer support, supporting families with children with disabilities. This is one of our curriculum that's considered a promising practice. And in our family strengthening sort of portfolio or block, we have culturally informed flexible family-based treatment for adolescents, what we call and they call SIFTUP, Trauma Focused Cognitive Behavioral Therapy, Parent-Child Interaction Therapy. So, so we're ready to get your input. So if you, and the QR code is right there. So, so if you've implemented any of these noted EVP, can you just share with us how satisfied are you with these EVPs? So, so again, it's mentee meter time. So I'll give you, I'll give you a little bit of time to get, to get there. I will just pause for a minute.
Bhavan?
Yes.
I'm going to just cut, put a couple of things in response. So thank you. Many of you are asking specific questions about different populations. So far, everything everybody's asked about is, is some, all populations that would have been included in the past. You, we're, we're pretty open. We have a pretty wide range of populations, as you heard from Bhavan in her description. We, we love your suggestions. If you have other specific groups that you want us to be aware of, go ahead and write it as input or a comment. When you do your application, the population description is one part of what you will tell us. And connected with that, there was a question about who makes referrals to these programs? That is part of your work. If you are going to propose to do one of these programs, we do not deliver the parents to you. You are part of the community, you are connected to partners, and you recruit parents into your program. So I think Bhavan went over that with some marketing and outreach expectations. And then there was a question about the train, the screenings that are done and how they're done and whether we provide training and appropriate screening. And the answer is yes, we do train our providers on the screening tools. And the staff in the programs who are serving young children and, and expecting parents are the ones that are expected to know how to use those tools and implement those screenings and follow up to the screenings. There was also a clarifying question about the universal parenting. I think we said it early, but maybe it was a quick point that, that got by people. We will be having a separate solicitation coming out for our parent club that will come out after this. That will be the umbrella solicitation for our universal parenting, the one-time workshops that were mentioned. So that's why today we're really focusing in on the selective and the indicated programming for group and individual and home visiting and clinical models.
Right, thank you, Lori. So I'm going to move to the next slide. Okay, so, so you gave us your inputs on, on the, your experience with, with the models. But we wanted to know if you're less than satisfied or if you're, if you've had challenges, please explain your ratings. Please explain um, your rating. So um, some of you might have gotten there as yet. But um, we, we'd like to, to hear a, a little bit more about um, if the EVP is not working um, for you. Um, uh, why are you dissatisfied with, with that? And, and sort of give us some suggestions for how to improve um, uh, work within that particular EVP. All right. So, so hopefully you're completing that, but I'm gonna go to the next slide. Okay, so um, as we shared, um, we, we have uh, about um, a dozen or so EVPs, right? That, but we all, we, we're always open to look at additional ones. And particularly right now, we are looking at um, those additional uh, that fall in the three categories. You know, support um, families prenatally, mental, um, or mental health um, and fatherhood, right? Um, so um, we also want to know if there are some other populations and Lori just mentions, uh, mentioned it, right? So um, so we're in the process of reviewing lo- um, I don't say lots, but we're in the process of reviewing um, uh, other EVPs based on our, our, our task at hand. Um, uh, to, to make sure that we have uh, within our portfolio. Um, EVPs that are responsive to our community needs, right? So um, uh, know that, that we have that process and your input here um, is going to help us. Um, so please um, a- as noted, share any names of EVPs. Um, which you have experienced and that you might, would um, recommend or you would like for us to consider. Um, we will, we will uh, take the opportunity to, to look at it and see if it aligns with the in- intent of the RFP. Um, and um, and so if you could just add those into the input form um, about your experience and um, supports. Or um, and tell us the source of information, where you're getting the source of information. Lori, did you, did you want to add something um, here? Okay. Thank you.
Uh, no, Yvonne, not, well, I think the one thing I will add is that we're juggling between the chat and the form and the mentee meter. And we need you to really stop putting substantive content in the chat. Information is going to get lost. And if you're already putting it in the form, we've got it. We don't need it in the chat. So it's going to make more work for us to try to have it in multiple places. If you could just please use the form, you can either um, enter the information as a comment or a question. Your question may or may not get read today. If it's quick and easy for us to answer, um, we can do that. If we need to think about it a little bit more and be a little bit more um, care, um, clear about how we're answering it. We're gonna do that in writing when we um, loop back with you guys on the meeting information after today. Uh, but really, give us your input. I saw lots of evidence-based programming being mentioned in the chat. Please put that in um, in this mentee meter. The name of the EVP is what we're looking for in the mentee meter. Just list the name of it only. But then if you have experience, we're really looking forward to people who have experience with the evidence-based programs you're mentioning. Who can then go into the comment form and give us a little bit more information about your experience. Why it's great and where we can find more information about it. That is the active phase that staff are in right now, uh, looking into additional evidence-based programs to include in potentially in the RFP.
Hi, can you please share the, the QR code for the forum, please?
Ne- next?
Yeah, the, the link is in the chat to the form. The QR code comes up every few slides, but the link is also in the chat. If you just scroll through the chat, there's a, you can click it and get to it that way.
Okay, I think if it's in the next slide. Alright, so this is, this is the first part of it, uh, is, is about um, if you have experience. And the second is um, if you have questions. So this is the forms. QR code. So what questions, input or concerns do you have about evidence-based practice?
Hello, Yvonne. Um, it's Holly's rolling again and I'm having difficulty with this input. And I do have some questions that are relative, relevant to the discussion.
Um, and I wonder- What you can do is send us your questions um, via email, okay? Because, and we can, we're not under the code of silence right now, so we can, we can take care of that after, sure.
Yeah, and, and we're-
Thank you, thank you.
And we're keeping the, the, the forms open till the end of the day. So you can provide your information after this.
Yeah, if you're able to.
Difficulty now.
Yeah, if you're able to before the end of the day, that would be the best way. Because it'll be integrated in with everything else. It, it might get lost if it comes separately. So ideally, yeah, and that is why we're keeping it open a little bit after the meeting ends. So people might have other thoughts, you know, as you have your lunch and you digest and you're talking to other people. You might have other input that we would welcome. Uh, but we also-
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Lori. Uh, thank you, Holly. Um, so uh, we're moving on to the next section, which is programs, activities and service sites, right? Next slide. So um, there's no real uh, change here um, from what we currently uh, have in our funded program. So program activities for um, the parenting and family strengthening um, programs. Um, the dosage intensity and minimum requirements are dictated by the curriculum, the EVP curriculum, right? Um, uh, we do allow requests uh, to modify the curriculum um, so that we're culturally responsive. So we, we've always put and we will continue to put in uh, the RFP. Um, if it uh, uh, a um, agency, um, uh, for example, uh, is working with um, let's say foster uh, 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 families or, or those who are um, taking care of foster families. Oftentimes, um, if there's a child requirement uh, for the curriculum, um, in this example that I'm giving. Um, uh, there uh, uh, the, the child may not be there to participate um, in a particular activity. So uh, the, the applicant may request a modification uh, to the curriculum to allow uh, for maybe limited uh, participation um, based on age, based on circumstances. And what we do is we review those requests. We look at the curriculum to see uh, about fidelity to the model. If the modification will compromise it. Um, and then we provide a uh, response um, to those individuals at contracting. Um, to indicate whether that modification is agreeable um, uh, to. And then it becomes a part of the contract and, and an allowable modifications um, to that particular EVP or curriculum. Um, we currently do allow virtual, in-person and hybrid following um, using um, uh, guidelines that we have in place and, and certain uh, policies. And in a bit, I'm gonna give you a little bit more about what we're doing in virtual and get some, some input. And when I say um, virtual, meaning allowing the participants to be seen, not in person, but in a virtual um, format. One of the changes that we're um, going to have for program activities this time. Um, in looking at our da- our, our data is just focusing on only the EVP and the EBV activities. Uh, in the past, we've allowed additional activities. Um, but um, um, moving forward in this RFP, we're not allowing additional activities outside of um, uh, the EVP. Um, to be funded within um, the program. Um, and um, we, we've always had um, the requirement and maintain the requirement that home-based programs must include um, home safety education as a part of that curriculum. Next slide. Okay, so as, as I noted, I'm just gonna share with you a little bit about what our current guidance is on virtual. Because there's a couple of questions that are coming forward. And I just want to give you some um, perspective and what we, um, what we're currently doing, right? So um, we, we offer um, to both um, group and individual um, EVPs. Um, um, including um, those that are in the family strengthening place. There, there is currently the availability to do that. This resulted from, you know, um, when we engaged in uh, through uh, COVID and the pandemic needing to adjust. And we've maintained some of that flexibility in programs. And we looked to guidance from the EVPs, um, and uh, they're sort of um, sanctioning or organization. Uh, to make sure that we were not jeopardizing fidelity to the model. Um, home visiting and pediatric, pediatric-based individual programs um, must deliver um, services in person. Um, that's because they're, they're intended, those services are intended to happen in those specific um, uh, locations or places. Um, so that, um, those are sort of exempted from the um, virtual uh, delivery. Um, and we allow a portion of the, your contracted participants or families to be seen in the virtual uh, mode. And we do allow flexibility in um, to, 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 for specific programs that uh, we do. We want to make sure that um, rapport building is happening. Um, but we, we, we do have some programs that allow, that we do allow for a combination of in-person and virtual. Um, so with me just sharing with you what we're doing. Uh, we have not made final decisions about what virtual delivery of services will look like in the upcoming um, RFP. Your insight and input, and as we continue to review what the literature and what the different EVPs are saying. We will look at that and in a moment, I'm, I'll ask a couple of questions around that. So bear with me as I talk a little bit more about service sites. Next slide. Um, so uh, uh, as we talk about where services are happening. Um, so the Children's Trust expects to fund sites that, that are throughout the county with a concentration in underserved communities with high need. Um, applicants may propose to serve one or, or multiple neighborhoods and may have one or more program sites throughout Miami-Dade County. Services should be offered in convenient locations such as um, in homes, childcare centers, schools, after-school program. Um, sometimes we have programs in um, uh, in our summer programs. They partner um, youth sports leagues, libraries is a place that we often see um, um, services happening in primary health settings and face-based locations and other community organizations. It is expected that group parenting ser- services will be available um, within trust's um, um, funded childcare centers, after-school um, and summer programs. So we're looking um, for um, partnerships with existing um, trust-funded programs. Um, uh, and as we talk about um, pediatric um, settings, preferred pediatric service locations include public health clinics, federally qualified health centers, family practice offices and pediatric offices that serve children who are underserved, uninsured, um, or underinsured, uh, or on Medicaid. Okay, so um, next slide. So as I mentioned, I gave you a little co- context of what we do. Um, we currently do in uh, virtual um, service delivery. Um, and so now it's time for us to get your um, um, input by uh, providing some answers to. So it's mentee meter time again. So, I mean, you could skip some of these um, answers. Um, so, so what, what proportion of your families um, you serve um, for group-based services? Um, interact um, with your um, with, with you online, virtually by phone? Um, interact with you in person, face-to-face, interact with you through mix, online and in-person hybrid? And your choices are none, less than 50, more than 50, or all? And you'll have the same um, opportunity. We're asking the same for individual and family strengthening service. Um, to give us a proportion of families you serve and the method by which you're engaging with them. So I'll give it a minute and I'll look to Yvette to tell me if we, if we need any more time, if we're getting um, the response we're looking for. Lori? So I'm gonna move forward to the, to the next question or the next slide, please. So I've shared with you what are, are plans for program activities and service sites. Um, so what questions or input, or, or can you give us any input concerns you have? So please use the forums. Um, and again, not in the chat. Um, let's use, let's use the forum so that uh, we capture and we can be fully responsive, if not here, um, later on to your ask. So, please provide your input. Yes, Lori?
While you're adding your input to the program activities section and service site section, uh, just share a couple of more quick um, comments. Uh, somebody asked again a question about being able to submit more than one application, more than one RFP, I think. But this is going to be one RFP. We're going to include two of our initiatives currently. Uh, that's our parenting initiative and our family strengthening initiative. Um, the models that you've been seeing that Yvonne just went over, it'll all be in one RFP. You can submit one application per agency. With the caveat that I mentioned earlier about large agencies um, having distinct um, divisions. And so it'll be one, one RP, one application. You can submit multiple evidence-based programs within one application. Um, also, there was a clarifying question about all the current EVPs in use. If they were just automatically going to be in the RFP. Um, we are looking for your input on this. So we are looking at the results that you're getting. We are trying, we, we are, we are actively asking for your input, your experience. What do your staff think about the programs they've been using? Uh, is it something you'd like to, to change and do something different? Do you feel that it's a good fit, not a good fit? Um, we may make some adjustments to the EVPs that are included in the R, RFP ultimately, based on that feedback and that input. Uh, and those can be, you know, about continued conversations. We, you know, I know that some of you have already shared some foot, feedback with us. So that's partly what we're, what we're trying to do is look at each EVP. Um, you know, scrutinize and make sure that it's still a great investment. Um, any evidence they, there was some questions about whether people can uh, adapt. We're gonna answer that in writing because there are certain ways that you can appropriately adapt evidence-based programs. And we've always allowed that. Uh, but also, any evidence-based programs that you might be recommending to us need to have uh, solid evidence of success with the expected populations. So, you know, you should be able to point us to uh, where we can look into the models that you're considering. Uh, where they have been validated and with, with the particular populations that you're, that you're interested in serving. Um, so send us, you know, your input. We're not, we're gonna be funding, you know, just like, hey, I'm Lori and I'm a really smart person and I know how to do parenting and I'm gonna run parenting groups. If we, we're not gonna fund Lori's parenting groups. Um, even though, you know, we might think that, that it could be a great thing. We want, we want to have uh, some uh, manualized, you know, uh, evidence to what we're gonna be including. And um, make sure that we can have uh, fidelity to any models that are proposed. And then a few of you are asking questions about alternate tools. Uh, those related to screening and outcomes. We haven't gotten to outcomes yet. So again, um, you're gonna hear some outcomes information. Maybe your question will be answered. Um, if it's not, you can um, ask the clarifying question after the outcome section. But we, we have, we have this session today because we want your input. So if you think that there's a big problem with one of the tools you've seen or that you see coming up. Um, let us know what you, what your experience is with that tool. Let us know why or what's the, what's the challenge? And we are gonna be considering all that input, just like with the EVPs. So alternate screening measures, we know that some EVP- So alternate screening measures, we know that some EVPs have certain screening measures required. Uh, so, you know, we want to make sure we're looking into that. Uh, and, um, and um, okay, yeah, that's, that's where we are for now, Vivon.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lori. Um, next, um, so we're going to move on to, um, staffing and implementation partners. And as Lori mentioned, you, you, you have access to the forum anytime you, um, you have, uh, additional, um, questions. Uh, but know that there are a couple of sections that we still have to go, um, including, um, the, the outcomes and where, where we prepare the presentation to, to hopefully be responsive um, to those, but we, we do welcome clarifying questions. Um, so next slide, please. Okay, so, uh, for, for staffing, um, uh, please note that, um, staffing qualifications and assigned workloads must be in alignment with the EVP guidance, right? So we, we look to that evidence-based program. Um, and we, we, we look to the requirements that they, they have for, uh, the staffing level because some are, um, uh, are very specific um, and require, have minimum levels of staffing qualifications. And, and we'll, we'll share that information as we put out the, um, the RFP. Um, we, we have sort of like a snapshot of what the EVP says, right? So depending on the specific EVP staff, maybe paraprofessional, right? Uh, some only require like certification in the curriculum, training in the curriculum and, and certification. And there are some curriculums that just require training and don't have, um, a curriculum. Um, and, uh, the level of staffing is different. So some may require professional level of, of, of staffing, particularly our more clinical, um, um, programs that have master-level clinicians, um, that are dictated by the EVP. Um, uh, as I mentioned, training, um, is, is, um, is important and necessary. And we do support, um, uh, training and within the RFP, we ask about training and we ask about training costs. And, um, we have traditionally at the start of a funding cycle, um, uh, supported EVP training outside of your contracts, right? So we ask for the information, um, about, um, uh, what training costs will be um, for your individual programs. And then we collectively look at that across all the funded R, um, um, all the funded EVPs and coordinate training at the beginning of the funding cycle. Um, it's necessary that, um, uh, programs have supervisors that are also trained um, in the specific EVPs. You know, it's hard for an individual to be, uh, supervising staff or engaged in EVP and that supervisor is not familiar with the EVP. So that is a requirement that the supervisors, um, uh, should be trained, um, in the specific EVP as well. Right? And it's important. We live in a very diverse, uh, community and, um, many of our, our services are delivered in different languages. Um, uh, we do have service delivery, um, that happens by, um, uh, many of our providers in, in, in Spanish and H and Creole. So it's important that, um, there are, are staff that, uh, possess a level of cultural competency to be, um, um, supportive of those families in our community, right? Uh, we want, um, uh, that, uh, these are, these individuals are reflective of the parents and the families, um, being served, um, by each of your funding agencies inclusive of race, ethnicity and gender. Um, and instructive and reflective supervision should be provided on a regular basis, right? So the, the program staff are, um, are trained, the supervisors are trained, and there's ongoing supervision that's happening to assure that there's implementation of programs and you're addressing things, um, as they come up. Next slide. So, so who are the partners that, that many of you have and who are the partners that we expect to see in these programs? So we often see that, uh, programs come to the table in their applications with partners, um, for the service site, uh, locations. Um, we mentioned before where these services can happen. And, um, we noted that, um, service location could be all throughout the community in various, um, different locations. So, um, yeah, engaging and having partnerships with, um, service site locations is something that would be, you would expect to see in your application. Um, and, um, then we also want to make sure if you are serving a sort of a, a, a particular population, the expectation is you're going to have partners that, um, uh, that are reflective of, um, supports and, um, building the relationship around a, a particular, um, population. And for example, here, um, uh, if you are serving court-ordered, um, participants, we expect, um, that, uh, uh, there is a level of, of support or partnership with DCF or, um, um, Citrus, who is, um, uh, the sort of, the, the, the stopgap provider, um, for the dependency, um, uh, system. Um, eight, and we expect that agencies to refer families for additional support following screening after, um, program from, um, completion. So, um, those are our early childhood programs that have the screening requirements. The, the, the responsibility is to, is connect and build those relationships so that there is follow-up happening. Um, and any other, um, implementation partners that, um, that are you as a provider sort of deem necessary related to the, um, the curriculum? We expect to see in your application. Next. So we're ready, um, to see if you have some input questions, uh, around staffing and implementation partners. So, uh, if you can go to the forums and add your questions, give us your input, indicate if you have any concerns. Okay, I'll give it, I'll give it half a minute, um, before I turn it over to my partner who will share with you more about participant outcomes. Yvette, any questions in this area that we need to address? Go ahead, Lori.
So, um, yeah, I'll just, sorry. I was just going to say, I just put a comment in the chat box, but in case you're not looking at that anymore because I noticed it went quiet, Mac, for my last comment. Um, uh, if you're, we're seeing lots of great input in the input form. We're just realizing that, you know, we set that up to be an anonymous form. Um, if you have like very particular information or background about a tool that you're proposing or an evidence-based program that you're proposing and you don't mind us contacting you if we need more information, um, you could add your name and your email contact. That would be helpful, uh, because, you know, we might, we might not be able to find all the information or you might be able to give us, um, more details about recommended, uh, models or tools that you're, that you're submitting in the chat, I mean, in the form. I know it's, um, it's, you know, limited space and time right now to, to put that together. So that's the only comment I have right now, Vivon.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Um, so at this time, I am going to turn it over to Apurva and Apurva, I'm going to allow you to introduce yourself because I don't want to mess up your last name. Um, Apurva is one of our research analysts. So, um, um, I'm handing it over to Apurva.
Thank you, Vivon. Hi, everyone. Good morning. My name is Apurva Komajosla and I am one of the research and evaluation analysts of the Children's Trust for the Parenting Initiative. I will be speaking on the participant outcome section of the RFP. Next slide, please.
Could you spell your name? Could you spell your name, please?
Uh, it's Apurva, A.P. double O.R.V.A. It's on there, just say it's on there. Um, all right, so previously we, uh, required three common outcomes for family strengthening. But the main change for the solicitation is that there is now a requirement for two common outcomes for both parenting and family strengthening. The common outcomes are dependent on the EVP curriculum and the target child age. And applicants can also propose additional outcomes. Um, next slide, please. As mentioned previously, these are some of our common outcomes. An example of a measurement tool that is associated with the particular common outcome. So just going down the list, um, we have the outcome, children or youth decrease problem behavior or maintain appropriate behavior. An example of a measurement tool we use to assess this would be the Child Behavior Checklist or the CBCL. The outcome, parents or primary caregivers decreasing, decreased parenting stress has an associated measurement tool of parent stress index short form. And for the outcome, parents or primary caregivers increase positive parenting or family strengthening, um, that has an associated measurement tool of the family environment scale. As we are considering to expand to include more prenatal services, prenatal evidence-based practices and mental health services, some of the common outcomes we are considering to measure include adult stress or anxiety, adult depression and birth outcomes. Some of the measurement tools we are considering for these outcomes include the parent health questionnaire or the PHQ nine and the general anxiety disorder tool or the GAD seven tool. Please be sure to send us any suggestions or input you have about these outcomes and tools or others that we should consider. Next slide, please. Uh, again, like the other sections, if you have any questions, input or concerns about the participant outcomes, please make sure to fill out the live form and select the participant, um, outcome section in the form. I'll give it maybe like a minute. If there's anything. All right, next slide, please. So the Children's Trust is a learning organization and likewise expects that all funded providers will practice ongoing reflection on program operations and quality improvement with the ultimate goal of increasing impact for the children and families served through offering higher quality services. Key performance metrics are derived from observations of program activities and attendance, participant satisfaction feedback, as well as reviewing contract and participant data. Staffing includes items related to having qualified staff, as Vivon spoke to earlier, um, in place with proper training and supervision. Um, service delivery relates to program implementation and quality of activities, including environment, interactions, ratios, et cetera. Data quality is reflected in the accuracy and timeliness of required information entered in the Trust Central system such as attendance, demographics, outcomes. While programs continue to assess their data quality, our research team at the Trust also continues to do data quality checks. And we would like to include our partners and others that work directly with the data in this conversation on how to plan for and manage these data quality checks in an efficient and transparent manner moving forward. Population focus reviews whether the intended population is successfully recruited and that children and youth with disabilities are appropriately included. Program participation will focus on service utilization, part, participant engagement and retention levels. Participant outcomes includes how meaningful improvement is measured and whether the program service improve, uh, outcomes of the, uh, program participants. All programs, no matter how high functioning, can find ways to improve through reflecting, analyzing and learning about how their program is working. Growth planning is a collaborative approach to regularly review and reflect upon program information with management and direct service staff, partners, as well as participants and other stakeholders. Providers should aim to regularly review and update their growth plan with their Children's Trust Program Manager. Provider, pro, uh, program supports are available to support program growth. Um, additionally, all parenting providers are required to engage in the available Trust Academy supports, which include online courses, live training, peer learning activities and coaching. I will now pass it back to Vivon, who will speak on the next steps. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Apurva. Next slide. Okay, so I'm, I'm going to talk about next steps and then we'll pause a little bit to make sure that if there are any questions that we, we have that we can be responsive, um, to, um, and, uh, be able to inform you as much as we can, um, prior to, um, uh, we're ahead of schedule, um, so prior to ending, um, the session. So, um, please submit all your questions and input, um, via the live form. Um, by 5:00 PM today, the forum will be open after this session. Um, and we will take that information as we, uh, create, um, um, documents. Um, so this PowerPoint, the recording of the session, all the Q and As and, um, a participant's list will be posted in the grant section of our website. Um, so you'll have all, all the, um, information, right? Um, uh, necessary for you to, if you want to go back to the, um, uh, the recording, you want to just look at the PowerPoint, you want to look at the who, who, who participated, you'll have all that information, um, that we are going to, um, uh, post, um, by, uh, next week, um, on the, uh, 23rd. By the 23rd, right? Um, and, um, please look forward, we're on schedule to release our, our, our P in February, 2023, um, for a new funding cycle that's going to begin October, um, of next year, right? Um, and a plug for, uh, maintaining and getting information, um, from the trust. Um, be sure to sign up, um, for the Children's Trust Weekly Provider Bulletin. Um, and, uh, if, even if you're not a provider, it's a, it's an opportunity to get information, um, uh, out to the community, um, about what's happening in the trust, including, um, uh, information about, um, all of our upcoming solicitations, right? So, and, and just be, um, um, careful that you don't unsubscribe because, um, those buttons are, are, are there closed and make sure that you are subscribed to that to get up-to-date information. So, um, at this time, this is, uh, sort of the, our slide, our full slide deck of information that we're sharing during this parenting and family instruction, family strengthening input session. And I'm going to look to my colleagues to see if there are any particular clarifying questions that we're able to be responsive to at this time, um, before we, um, close out.
Yeah, Vivon, thank you. Um, I don't, I think that we're, there, the rest of the questions are pretty specific and we're going to take the time to answer them in writing. There was one note that I'll just, um, give an amen to, and that is we need better and more data access. Uh, we need that too, inside the trust, and we know that you all need that. And for us to walk the walk, uh, of the continuous learning, um, organization that, that Apurva spoke about, um, we are, that's a major priority. You know, we've, we've, you know, you all know, we deployed an updated version of our participants module earlier in this calendar or, or, you know, early this calendar year. That has a lot of functionality and flexibility in it that we have not yet fully realized. Uh, so we're going to be working also on our metrics module. We have a lot of work to do between now and when this new funding cycle begins. Um, and this won't be the only point in time where we are getting input about that. So just as a, an example, um, when we, we, we have sometimes start a new funding cycle, we have the planning and the RFP that comes out. Once funding, once applications come in and they're rated and we make funding recommendations, we typically have some time before contracts begin. And that's another time where we, you know, actually just recently, we developed a whole separate initiative, um, uh, reporting module in Trust Central for family and neighborhood support partnerships, for example, that will track that model in a very particular way. And the funded providers were active in giving us development input and requirements and testing the system, uh, so that we can, um, make sure that we're collecting the right information and that we can then access that information to, to continue, um, improving the quality of the services. So we will be definitely working on the data access piece for everyone to, to be continuing to do that. So, thank you all very much.
One other ask, Lori, yes, yes, one other ask. Um, uh, it appears that, um, we're, uh, the level of, uh, input that we received during, for the Mentimeter, um, that maybe some of you didn't have time. So I don't know if we can put up a slide with the Mentimeter so that you can, uh, please go back to the Mentimeter and be responsive to the questions that we asked, um, about screening, about virtual, um, about populations of service. Um, that will be very helpful to us as well as we continue to plan for this RFP.
Yes, I noticed in some of the comments. Yes, I noticed in some of the comments and questions in the forum, people were, were giving us the type of input on some of the content of the Mentimeter questions, like how virtual. Services being incorporated, particular evidence-based models. So if you have that experience and you didn't do the Mentimeter, you were trying to just, you know, juggle too many devices, you know, between Zoom and Mentee and the form. Maybe now is a good time that we could go back to the Mentee questions. That gives us just a little bit of quantitative data to go with the qualitative comments that you're giving us. We know that all the Mentee questions are not applicable to everyone. Because not all of you have used all the evidence-based models, for example, but for the ones you have used, for sure. Your input is like gold for us on that because we aren't direct implementers of programs here, you are. So you need to tell us about what's worked well and what hasn't. Are we pulling up the Mentimeter?
Yeah, I can, yeah, can we pull up one of the Mentimeters? Yes.
No, can we, can we just? Vivon, were you asking to pull up the actual Mentimeter presentation?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Just the QR code.
But there's multiple. I don't know where we're, there's multiple slides, right? So multiple questions. So were you just asking about the virtual questions or all of the Mentimeter questions?
Well, all of the Mentimeter questions. So I, I think, Yvette, if I'm mistaken. It allows them to go, does it allow them to go back?
Yes, so I started it from the beginning, which is the screening tool. So they can go back to our first question and then they will go in order. Until the end.
Okay, so this, this QR code will get them there?
Correct.
Okay, great. But we'll leave it up for a minute before we end to allow you to go there. And again, thank you. And I think we can stop the recording. And allow and keep the slide up for a minute to allow you to get there. Thanks again. We appreciate your time, your input, and we've given you the opportunity to get an hour back into.